Hi, good evening and welcome to the online meeting of the Burbank Planning Board on Monday, October 12, 2020. This meeting is called to order at 6:02 PM. Before we begin our meeting, there will be separate periods of public comment tonight, one for each public hearing, and one general public comment period towards the end of the meeting. Persons speaking during the public hearings may only address the planning board regarding that hearing. Persons speaking during the general public comment period may provide the planning board oral communication on any matter concerning city business. If you would like to participate in the public comment periods, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open. The next items on the agenda are the invocation and the flag salute. Vice Chair Hadian will lead the invocation and Board Member Rosati will lead the flag salute. If everyone could please stand.
Lord, we thank you for this day and the many blessings we have received. As this meeting begins this evening, I pray for each person here. Give us listening ears and thoughtful words. Give us presence of mind and an open heart. Amen.
Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, indivisible, and justiciable.
If I could have the roll call, please?
Board Member Rosati.
I am here.
Vice Chair Hadian.
Present.
Chair Liu.
Present.
Board Member Gamboa. Let the record show Board Member Gamboa is absent. Board Member Otukinian. And let the record show Board Member Otukinian is also absent.
Thank you. In order to balance the health risks associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner, during the current state of emergency and in the interest of public health and safety, board members will be participating in an online planning board meeting. City facilities are closed to the public until further notice, and the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. The city is providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating in public board meetings. In lieu of in-person attendance, members of the public may participate in the public comment period by calling 818-238-3335. For our next item, do we have any announcements from city staff?
There are no announcements.
Thank you. There are two public hearings on tonight's agenda. The first hearing is on project number 19-0008071 concerning a conditional use permit to allow the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption in conjunction with the operation of a bona fide public eating place, California Fish Grill, a restaurant currently under construction at 551 North Hollywood Way, Building C. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflicts of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
No.
No. Have any board members had any communications, including written or oral, with the applicant or the applicant's representative or any other person?
No.
No.
No. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Thank you. Are there any written communications on this matter?
No additional comments have been received, so only whatever is in your agenda packet.
Thanks. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce herself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Chair Otukinian and members of the planning board. My name is Xavier Thomas, planning technician for the city of Burbank. I'm here to present the project request before you this evening, which is a proposed conditional use permit application for the onsite sale of beer and wine for a sit-down restaurant at 551 North Hollywood Way. The project applicant is California Fish Grill Restaurant. The requested conditional use permit application is a request to allow a proposed bona fide eating place to allow the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption only. The current CUP request does not involve expanding any building square footage area of this restaurant. The conditional use permit application is requested in accordance with Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-1116. The project site is Zone C2 Commercial Limited Business. The subject property was previously a Carl's Jr. Restaurant established in November 2000. The proposed restaurant is currently under construction and entering the final stages of the plan check and permitting process. The project site, highlighted in yellow on the provided aerial map, is situated between Westford Dugald Avenue and North Hollywood Way. The tenant space, highlighted in red, shows where the proposed California Fish Grill will be located. The project site is surrounded by a mixture of both commercial and residential uses. There are existing multifamily uses to the north and east, along with commercial uses to the east and south. To the south of the tenant space is a surface parking lot that accommodates parking for the shopping center. To the southwest is Plan Development 94-8, also known as the Warner Brothers Ranch Facility, where there is a variety of commercial and office uses. Currently, there is a surface parking lot with 311 onsite spaces that serve the shopping center. In addition, there are 11 parking stalls, including two ADA handicap stalls, surrounding the perimeter of the proposed restaurant. The existing parking supply for the restaurant is considered legal non-conforming for the proposed restaurant. However, the current CUP request would not trigger new parking spaces to be provided. In addition, staff has added a condition of approval that the existing surface parking lot and parking spaces are maintained in good condition at all times to ensure the existing parking spaces are available for use by the restaurant. It is staff's assessment that with this condition of approval, the current CUP request will not have a negative impact on the restaurant's operations and surrounding uses. The proposed new restaurant, California Fish Grill, would occupy a 2,676 square foot commercial space with a 665 square foot outdoor dining patio. This slide shows the restaurant's floor plan, including the outdoor dining area highlighted in blue. The gray area shaded represents the indoor dining area, where incident alcohol is served with meals. The brown area represents the restroom, and the red is the kitchen area. The red highlighted portion shows where the alcohol storage will be held. California Fish Grill, in accordance with the city's zoning code, is considered a restaurant with incidental alcohol sales. As shown, California Fish Grill will devote 33 total square feet of maximum floor area for the primary location of sales and storage of alcohol. Meals would also be served with the incidental beer and wine service when provided in the outdoor dining area. In addition, staff has analyzed how the current CUP request will be compatible with the surrounding uses and is consistent with the city's Burbank 2035 general plan. The project site is surrounded by both residential and commercial uses, situated between Westford Dugald Avenue and North Hollywood Way. The project site also has a general plan land use designation of corridor commercial, which encourages pedestrian-level and neighborhood-serving commercial uses along the city's commercial corridors. The proposed restaurant and the current CUP request are consistent with the goals of this land use and is in an area of the city where neighborhood commercial uses are encouraged. The CUP request would allow the restaurant to serve alcoholic beverages as part of the meal, including in its outdoor dining area, a pedestrian-level feature provided by the restaurant. The CUP request will not deviate from the restaurant's operation as a bona fide eating place. The proposed alcohol service in the existing outdoor area will still be incidental to the primary restaurant use in accordance with the city's zoning code. The restaurant will operate from 11:00 AM to midnight, Monday through Sunday, and therefore will not be operating as a late-night business. The restaurant will not have a dance floor nor live speakers outside in the outdoor patio area. Recommended conditions of approval are included in the proposed planning board resolution to ensure that the restaurant operates within these conditions. Some of the recommended conditions relate to the restaurant's operation and its alcohol sales inside the restaurant. California Fish Grill will be responsible for ensuring all employees that serve alcohol are trained properly in accordance with the state alcohol beverage control trainings. Based on this analysis, staff has developed the recommended conditions of approval and determined that the necessary findings to approve the CUP can be made. Here is a map showing the existing ABC licenses that allow the onsite sale or consumption of alcohol within the same census tract map as California Fish Grill. A total of three of these sites have Type 41 alcohol licenses located within Census Tract Map 3114. Two ABC licenses are located in the same shopping center as the subject property, one being a Smart &amp; Final Grocery Store with a Type 86 ABC license, and the other being Curry Curry, a sit-down restaurant with a Type 41 license. Therefore, staff recommends the approval of a resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank approving project number 19-0008071, a conditional use permit allowing the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption in conjunction with the operation of a restaurant at 551 North Hollywood Way, based on the findings of fact presented and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions if there should be any. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now invite the applicant or the representative to address the planning board. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Terry Womack. I'm with GoToPermitting. I'm representing the California Fish Grill Restaurant. Just want to say we're excited to be coming to your neighborhood. Just a little bit more information about California Fish Grill. You know, we've been around since 1998, and we're a fast casual family restaurant, seafood restaurant, and we're very excited to be growing through this number of years we've been in business and continue to service the area of California and especially Burbank. Xavier, you did a great job on the presentation. Thank you so much. If you guys have any questions for me, I'm here to help.
Thank you, Mr. Womack. There will be time for questions in a moment.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. To address the planning board, please call 818-238-3335. That's 818-238-3335. The phone lines are now open, so please bear with us, as it may take a couple minutes for the first callers to get through the line.
We'll do that. I think we're waiting, it's been about two minutes or so. We're gonna, if we can give it one more minute.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. As there's no public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further public com, um, excuse me, further comments?
Uh, no further comments, Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Thomas. Does the applicant or Mr. Womack wish to make any further comments? You have a maximum time of 10 minutes.
I know further comments, thank you.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions, staff or the applicant? Yes, Mr. Board Member Rosati.
Madam Chair, thank you. Just two questions, one for staff, the applicant. It didn't look like there was a drive-through, I just wanted to double-check, is there a drive-through on this?
There is no drive-through.
Correct, there is no drive-through.
And then for the applicant, what's your experience with selling beer and wine?
Um, my experience personally?
No. How many stores do you have that sell beer and wine?
Yes, we have roughly 35 stores right now. I would say 15 in the Los Angeles County area and all throughout California, so, let's see, the closest one to Burbank would be Glendale. We have North Hollywood, Woodland Hills, Upland. We have a few more in the pipeline as well, here in San Diego, Orange County.
So you're saying 15 have beer and wine?
Um, all of them have beer and wine, yes.
Oh, great. Thank you. No more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hadian, did you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. I now declare the hearing closed, and the planning board will now deliberate. What is a planning board's pleasure? Board Member Rosati.
If there's no deliberations, I can easily make the recommendation in the resolution.
Please do.
A resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank approving a conditional use permit, project number 19-0008071, allowing for the incidental sale of beer and wine for the onsite consumption in conjunction with an operation of a bona fide public eating place, California Fish Grill at 551 North Hollywood Way, based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any other comments? Okay. If we could please get the roll call?
Board Member Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hadian?
Yes.
Chair Liu?
Yes.
Motion passes? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Womack.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, our second hearing tonight is on project number 19-0007421 concerning a conditional use permit to allow the incidental sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for onsite consumption in conjunction with the operation of a bona fide public eating place, Selfie Fusion Kitchen, an existing sit-down restaurant located at 236 East Alameda Avenue. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflict of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
No, but I want to disclose that I've been to the restaurant, so do I disclose in the next, okay, thank you.
No. Uh, do any, have any board, planning board members had any communications, including written or oral, with the applicant or the applicant's representative or any other person?
Yes, I have been to their restaurant, and a bit of a member, I complimented the owners on their project design and their food, and to just make sure if I have to recuse myself, I notified Mr. McMillan today. And we discussed that hopefully they will have a grand opening, and they mentioned maybe after their application for beer and wine, so that was the entire communication.
Mr. McMillan, is there anything that needs to?
Thank you, Chair Liu and fellow, fellow board members. No, I mean, Board Member, Vice Chair Hadian, I think met the conflict of interest provisions in the Brown Act by disclosing the ex-party communication. She does not need to recuse herself. It was just important that she put that on the record so that the public and fellow board members have that information before you when you deliberate and consider the matter.
I feel comfortable with the information.
That's great. If she recused herself, we would not have court. So, Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Thank you. Are there any written communications on this matter?
No additional written communications were received other than what was included in your agenda packet.
All right, thanks. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Members of the planning board?
Good evening, Chair Liu and members of the board. My name is Karen Chavez, and I am a planning technician with the planning division. Tonight, I will be presenting the proposed conditional use permit for the property located at 236 East Alameda Avenue. The applicant is Lee Rabun. He is representing Selfie Fusion Kitchen. The project site is located in the C2 Commercial Limited Business Zone and is 13,000 square feet in size. The properties to the north of the project site are zoned C2 Commercial Limited Business and contain multifamily residential. To the south of the project site, the zoning is R4 High Density Residential, which contains multifamily residential. To the west, the zoning is C2 and BCC3, which contains general office buildings and multifamily residential, respectively. To the east, the zoning is C2 and R4, which contains general office and multifamily residential, respectively. In the graphics shown, the yellow box indicates the boundaries of the subject property. The project site is located at 236 East Alameda Avenue, northeast of the intersection of East Alameda Avenue and South San Fernando Boulevard. The property is currently developed with an existing restaurant, Selfie Fusion Kitchen, that is 2,303 square feet. The existing development was approved through city building permits in 2018. The application being considered is a CUP in order to allow for the sale and consumption of beer, wine, and distilled spirits as an incidental use to the operation of a bona fide public eating place, Selfie Fusion Kitchen. The applicant has also indicated that if the restaurant is unable to secure the appropriate Type 47 license from ABC, then the applicant will apply for the Type 41 license instead. A Type 41 license would only allow for the sale of beer and wine. The property does not have any previous planning entitlements nor Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control licenses allowing the sale of alcoholic beverages. Therefore, the applicant is required to apply for a CUP in order to allow for the incidental sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for onsite consumption. The sale of alcohol for off-site consumption would not be allowed under this permit. The existing restaurant has an existing 2,303 square foot commercial tenant space with outdoor dining. There are no proposed changes to the interior or exterior of the restaurant in order to accommodate the incidental sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite sale and consumption. On the screen, you can see the different areas of the existing restaurant, including the area where alcohol would be stored. The applicant would be conditioned to limit the area of the establishment devoted primarily to the sale or consumption of alcohol to a maximum of 15% of the adjusted gross floor area of the establishment. The applicant is proposing to serve alcoholic beverages in the outdoor patio area. With regard to parking, there are a total of 21 parking spaces on the project site. The required parking for a full-service restaurant is 10 per 1,000 square feet of adjusted gross floor area. The adjusted gross floor area of the commercial building is 2,142 square feet, therefore the 21 parking spaces that are provided comply with the requirements in the Burbank Municipal Code. It is staff's assessment that allowing Selfie Fusion Kitchen to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits for onsite consumption as an incidental use to the existing restaurant will not significantly increase the demand for parking nor adversely affect the daily operations of the restaurant. Therefore, ample parking is currently provided to allow for the approval of the CUP without triggering the need for additional parking. The restaurant with incidental alcohol sales would operate similar to other commercial uses already in the surrounding area and would not create noise or traffic impacts above what would be expected from a high turnover food establishment in a commercial corridor setting. The use is not detrimental to the existing uses as it is consistent with the uses permitted in the C2 zone. The surrounding area consists of horizontal mixed use that includes multifamily residential, general offices, a variety of retail service-based uses, and other food establishments. Further, the project is located within a neighborhood that envisions commercial-based uses that accommodate the surrounding residential neighborhood. In order to minimize potential impact to the neighboring properties, conditions of approval have been integrated into the project that establish operational requirements, including limiting the sale of beer and wine to the hours of 10:00 AM to midnight, and conditioning that the last call to take orders for alcohol shall be no later than 30 minutes prior to the closing time. Therefore, it is city staff's assessment that the project with the associated conditions of approval would be compatible with the existing uses in the surrounding neighborhood and would ensure that the project does not adversely affect the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community. The map shows the location of the existing establishments within the Census Tract that sell alcohol for onsite consumption. There are currently five of these establishments. It is staff's assessment that the project is not detrimental to existing uses as it is consistent with and complementary to the uses permitted in the existing surrounding area, that the project with the associated conditions of approval would address any potential negative impacts that may arise from alcohol sales under the CUP, and that the project complies with all applicable findings necessary for approval of the conditional use permit. Therefore, staff recommends the planning board approve the project by adopting the following. A resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank to approve a request for a conditional use permit to allow for the incidental sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for onsite consumption in conjunction with the operation of a bona fide public eating place, Selfie Fusion Kitchen, at 236 East Alameda Avenue, project number 19-0007421, based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for questions.
Thank you. I will now invite the applicant or the representative to address the planning board. You have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Good evening. This is Lee Raven. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't know what happened there. This whole Zoom process is new to me, so. My name is Lee Raven. I'm a consultant with CLR Enterprises Incorporated. We're landy's consultants. Our specialty is the sale of alcoholic beverages. Most of our clients are in restaurants. The Via Selfie Fusion Kitchen is a result of the American, Americanians family vision to create an upscale, unique restaurant and bring it to Burbank. They started this vision in 2017 when they were trying to decide what to do with a piece of property that they were unhappy with the development of, an old residential duplex, I believe it was. Marietta American, Americanian is present with us tonight. I'd like to commend Karen Chavez on her staff report and on the work she's done with us over the last, I guess about 10 months now. Her communications are clear and succinct. She's prompt to return phone, phone messages and emails, and I found her a pleasure to work with. She also prepared a very, very detailed staff report. So I won't go through the exacting details of the staff report. I'll just get to the meat, meat and potatoes of our application here. The application is for a full-line alcoholic beverage license, a type 47 that would apply to a restaurant. When we began this process back in 2019, when my firm was brought on in 2019, our plan was to apply for a full liquor license. We filed an application for a beer and wine license as a placeholder with the ABC and began the CUP process with the city. We placed the Americanians into the ABC licensed lottery in 2019 for a type 47 license. They were unsuccessful in that attempt. Then came COVID, which caused, as we all know, about a six-month delay. The Americanians no longer could not afford to get into the 2020 lottery, but they still planned to upgrade the license. Type 47 really meets with the design and unique character of Via Selfie, much better than beer and wine. I would like to add to the staff report that in this application, there's no request for dancing or live entertainment, and we will comply with condition 24, which requires that there be not, no outdoor speakers. We'll also comply with the other 32 conditions of approval. One thing listed in the staff report is our proximity to residents, and that's also a concern at the ABC. Over the last three weeks or so, we've knocked on most of the residential doors abutting our property within 100 feet and presented a petition to those who had answered their doors who come to the door. We're able to receive 13 signatures in support, including five residents from 232 East Alameda, which is directly south of the property, the nearest residential use, and five residents at 302 East Alameda, directly north of the property. We have reviewed the 32 conditions of approval and agree to be bound by them. Via Selfie will employ the Motto House Policy Manual, prepared by the ABC for all on-sale licensees, and all of their alcohol servers will attend the ABC lead training and education program. With that, I'll try to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Raven. There'll be a time for questions later.
Thank you.
So we will now open the public hearing to hear from any person who wishes to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. To address the planning board, please call 818-238-3335. The phone lines are now open, so please bear with us as it may take a few minutes for the first callers to get through the line.
Chair, I think we have a call on the queue, so.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Monica. Monica, you are now live on with the planning board.
Good evening. I do have a question regarding the outside consumption of alcohol. If it's, if it's, if it's going to be some, if there's going to be any televisions out there while serving alcohol at the restaurant?
Does someone from staff would like to respond to that?
Yes, my name is Karen, and the applicant has not indicated that there will be screens on the patio and there are going to be no speakers as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Mr. Ramirez, any, any other calls?
It doesn't look like there are any other calls. Maybe if we give it a minute, just to confirm.
Thank you.
Chair, there are no other calls.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the community development department like to make any further comments?
No further comments.
Thank you. Does the applicant or Mr. Raven wish to make any further comments? You may have a maximum of 10 minutes if you do.
No comments.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions, the staff or the applicant?
I have a question. The question was, the caller asked for any TV outside or speakers or both? TV?
Hi, yes. The caller asked if there were going to be TVs or speakers, and there will be none in the outdoor patio.
Thank you.
What member is that?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for the applicant. Just let me know when the applicant's there.
I'm here.
Actually, the applicant, not the representative.
Marietta, are you online? Marietta? I'm not sure if she's with us or not. Can you hear me?
Mr. Raven, it looks like she's not on, on the call. So we can hear you, but she's not actually on the Zoom meeting.
Okay, she was having problems getting on. I'm sorry.
So my question was, and I really wanted to speak to the applicant, what her or their experience level is in serving beer and wine and what their confidence level is to abide by the rules.
Certainly. May I respond to that? Sure. The Americanians also own the real estate here, sir, Mr. Rosati. This is their first opportunity and first chance at a restaurant. But I think they've shown their sincerity by hiring a very well-known, nationally-known designer to create this beautiful interior and exterior unique design. And they hired the ex-executive chef from, what is it, Fig and, what's the name of that place? I did some work for him once. Anyway, a very high-end restaurant in town. They've also hired my firm, sir. I spent 11 years with the Alcohol Beverage Control, and I left 35 years ago. I, I, I see the look on your face. I will be working with them. I've found, sir, in my 45 years doing this, those who invest this kind of money and take the operation of a restaurant with a liquor license as seriously as the Americanians have, you shouldn't have any problem with them. They will attend the ABC lead program, the licensee education program that ABC has. And that's the answer to your question.
Okay. And then I guess my next question is for board member Hadian. Ingress, egress, when you were leaving the restaurant, how tough was it?
No problem.
Pulling out on the?
Oh, I didn't park on their parking lot. I parked outside, walked into the restaurant.
Yeah.
Very, very good design.
Yeah.
That's all I can say. And very good food, too.
Yeah.
So.
I'll save the rest of my comments for our deliberation. Thank you.
I had a question for staff, Ms. Chavez. Just, just to clarify, I mean, it seems to, to remember Rosati's point of these being first-time applicants for liquor license. If, if they violate any, any of the terms, then this is conditional, so it can always be revoked. Am I correct? You are on mute, Ms. Chavez.
My apologies. That has been indicated on the conditions of approval.
Thank you very much.
Actually.
Any other questions?
Yes. Let me clarify, Ms. Rosati. I wasn't a driver. We did park in their parking lot. So that's why I didn't remember, and it was a very good access.
Pulling out again on, on Alameda was okay?
Yes, I believe there, there are two ingress and egress points.
The alley.
One from the Alameda, one from the alley. Yes.
Thank you for clarifying.
That was very, very good to remember. Thank you.
This is Deputy City Planner Scott Plambek. Just want to note that there's a condition, condition 22, that there is excess calls. Then that's, could be grounds for revoking their conditional use permit. Please note, if we go through that process, we'd have to come back to the board if, if we get complaints. So just to assure the board that there are, are conditions of approval in here that address any noise concerns or any complaints we may get.
Thank you, Mr. Plambek.
So, following what you mentioned, Scott, what's the problem if the applicant actually decides to have a TV in the future at the patio? If they bind to all of the noise level standards? Is there any limitation for that? That's a question for staff.
So, condition number 24 notes that there isn't, that the project does not include a proposal for outdoor speaker. But if they want to do any sort of outdoor speaker, they would have to come back to the board to request the speaker for, for the exterior area. So, with the condition as written is they cannot have outdoor speakers today, but if they wanted to include outdoor speakers, they would have to come back to the board and amend the permit.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. I now declare the hearing closed, and the planning board will now deliberate. What is the planning board's pleasure? Vice Chair Hadian?
I don't have any questions. I can support the, the application.
What member is that?
I'm a little concerned. First time operating this restaurant, beer and wine, no experience. I think I would have felt a little better if the applicant was in front of us or on the monitor, just so I can ask a couple of questions and feel a little bit more comfortable. So, I'd like to hear from each of you what your comfort level is. And I understand that so many phone calls or they can get their permit taken away, but God forbid they make one mistake and someone's killed, you know, I, I just, I look at this and it's, it's an important responsibility. We can't hand these out like candy, so I just want to hear from the two of you and see what you think.
Vice Chair Hadian, did you want to start?
If your concern is the staff they hire for serving alcoholic beverages, I think ABC has tough guidelines. And city has also supervision on executing under, on those guidelines. So I don't see, you know that I'm the one who's always like against liquor licenses close to residencies and schools. But there, there's no other way than giving them the permission to operate and supervising their operation. If your concern is their background experience in having restaurant or serving food or alcoholic beverages, is that your concern?
Yeah, I mean, usually we have like a general manager or someone that's been there, done that, have served and, and checked IDs and done all that. I didn't, I didn't get that comfort level that I normally have. And you know, you know me, I've been doing this a long time and I just didn't feel it this time. I just didn't feel like, it, it just seems like a newer operation. It's kind of a, these guys are real estate investors that are operating a restaurant, so this is not their forte. Again, I think if I had the applicant in front of me, I might have felt, been feeling a little different. So I just wanted to throw it out there and see what you, what you guys thought.
I don't think they're the first restaurant that are like, it's their first time applying for type 47 license. Let's ask staff how city actually supervises these type of businesses.
I don't know the answer to that. I'll defer to the city planner.
Sure. Chair, on our end, the conditions of approval, the 34 conditions that are noted or thereabouts, have triggers in them. So as far as operational requirements, if they fail to comply with those requirements, two things will happen. One, if, if it involves ABC, ABC can actually put a halt to their license. If they have other operational issues, there's conditions in there that would basically, they have to be provided notification of the violation, the violation of the condition. And they have to, they're given a reasonable time to take corrective action, whatever that may entail. If it requires additional training or follow-up, that's included. If they fail to comply with those requirements, then our code actually requires a revocation hearing. We'd have to notice it and it'd have to come back to you. And at that point, they jeopardize the entitlement, which is the CUP. And at that, and without that CUP, then they can't have the license from ABC. So I, Mr. Raven may be able to talk to the cost of what that license is and the implications of that. But I would think it's significant considering at this point, they're even in a lottery to try to get that license. So I think there are safeguards to that effect. I will say we've, more often than not, we've had different business owners that have ventured into the restaurant business. We've been quite fortunate. We've had some that have prior experience. But I wouldn't be able to tell you when we're another if it's because it's a first-time entry into the restaurant business or a long-time one. Clearly, those that have been there quite some time have a framework in, in place. But I, I don't say that that would preclude someone that's new from being able to do the same as far as operational requirements that are imposed on any other restaurant.
And is the city doing any monitoring of themselves?
Depending on, this would be more of an enforcement thing, so it's kind of outside my purview, but from what I do know is if there are complaints, there-
So I am comfortable with the existing procedures that we have in place with the city to monitor and to revoke the license if there is an issue.
Okay, I'll ride with you guys.
Just one more thing. Mr. Raven, the chef was from Fig and Olive, La Cienega and Melrose. I could tell from their culinary design and food, but now that you said it, I made sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So if we have no more comments on this, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. You're good? Board Member Hadian wants to make the motion. Resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Burbank to approve a request for the conditional use permit to allow for the incidental sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for the onsite consumption in conjunction with the operation of a bona fide public eating place, Selfie Fusion Restaurant, at 236 East Alameda Avenue, project number 190007421, based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval in Exhibit A.
Seconded.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. If there are no other comments, can I have the roll call vote, please?
Board Member Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hadian?
Yes.
Chair Lou?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0.
Thank you. Okay. Now on to oral communications from the public. Any person speaking during this period may address the board on any matter concerning city business. Comments are limited to three minutes. To participate, please call 818-238-3335. Again, that's 818-238-3335. Phone lines are now open, and please bear with us, as it may take a few minutes for the first callers to get through the line. Thank you.
There are no callers in the queue?
Thank you. With no public comments, I now declare this period of public comments closed. Next agenda item, reports from city staff. Do we have any reports, Mr. Ramirez?
There are no reports.
Thank you. And now we have approval of the minutes from September 14, 2020, and September 21, 2020, of the planning board. Are there any questions, comments, or can I have a motion?
I can move that.
Seconded.
Board Member Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hadian?
Yes.
Chair Lou?
Yes.
The motion passes. Now, we have, it's the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Planning board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no action may take place except to place the item on a future agenda. Do the board members have any items to introduce?
None for me.
No items.
I don't have any either, thank you. So, next agenda item is city planner comments. Do we have any comments from the city planner?
No additional, no comments from the city planner.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. All right, we are adjournment. We will now adjourn to the next online planning board meeting on Monday, October 26, 2020, at 6:00 PM. The public is invited to view the meeting online or on television, or will be able to participate, and they will also be able to provide public comment in the following two weeks. The first one would be by leaving an e-comment on the city webpage, which is www.burbankca.gov/ecomments. And the second way they can do it is by calling in directly to the planning board meeting at 818-238-3335. Thank you all for your participation, and have a good night.